Well, welcome, everybody.
Are we starting?
Yes, we're gonna start.
I'm sorry.
It's a little bit after 5:00, so I figure we should. Do we, for committee meetings, are there usually agendas handed out to the public? What do we usually do? I realized, I came here and I'm like, I don't have my copy.
We don't really have a usual.
Okay, we don't have a usual. All right.
So maybe... Describe how you want to do it.
I was gonna say, so we can start one, so I think...
It's not usual?
I think, no, well, I don't know. I don't know, Bunny, but I'm in the, I'm in the learning mode, so.
Great. So if you print agendas?
Yes, yeah, I would like agendas for folks. So is that something the office can do?
Yeah.
Okay, super. I would love to have a little supply for the public. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is to talk about the library terrace. And given that I know very little about it, because a lot of the discussion about it happened before I started coming to council meetings on a regular basis, I was able to find some things on the SharePoint site. So I was able to read the grant proposal, or the grant, the information related to the Windsor Street greening project, and how the terrace has some connection to that. And then I also asked Sean to have the office pull together what we've spent so far, which was not the easiest thing to do, I guess, because different accounts were used in different years to, you know, it wasn't as simple as just pulling one thing. So when I look at all of this, and I see the grant talks about the Borough making, as making sort of a matching contribution towards the green, the stormwater management, Green Street project on Windsor Avenue, that their matching contribution is they're committing $150,000 to build the terrace at the library, and then an additional $15,000 to put some rainwater management features into the terrace that weren't initially in the design. And when I look at that and see, well, that's, you know, we said we would have a matching contribution to do that, I say, well, the point of this grant is to manage stormwater and to prevent flooding. And so I'm wondering if maybe we have this really golden opportunity, because we weren't able to come to agreement with the contractor, to take a step back and see, are we, if we build the terrace as it's designed, do we end up creating more stormwater problems? Should we look at changing that design to be something that is more in keeping with the point of this grant, which is to manage stormwater in a very natural way, and less impervious surface way? So I think that's, it's my thought that we should recommend that to council, and that we kind of put everything on hold until we have some reassessment of, you know, what it is that we really need there, how does it fit into the spirit of this grant, because we obviously have that combined together. But I had asked Sean, do we know, are we required to build a terrace? Are we required, what, you know, what does this grant do? And I don't, I don't know if that's something that you even know the answer to, in the sense of what are we required to do under this.
Yeah, I don't yet.
Yeah.
I know that we have until the end of this year to expend the dollars that have been granted to the Borough, and we're at the end of this grant cycle, because the timing of this project was anticipated to have been completed last year or 18 months ago.
And that expenditure is the expenditure of money to do the greening, right? Not the expenditure of money to do the terrace?
So I've been at the meeting, I was at the initial meeting of the Pew, when the Pew Foundation came, met with the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation and the Lower Merion Conservancy. And we met here with other members of the Indian Creek, kind of like coalition. It's the people who live along Indian Creek, starting with Narborough Park, Narborough, the Windward, Shortridge Park, people, all the way going downstream. And their idea was that they're gonna spend money on the stream sequentially, like from the highest point down to save the lower waters.
Right.
And rather than give all their money to big projects further downstream, the idea was to spread it out and get the, to basically conserve the stream, going all the way to the headwaters. So I know Narborough Park's currently working on theirs, but the purpose of this grant from Narborough was to protect the Indian Creek runoff, the water that runs, was to mitigate the impact of the runoff into the Indian Creek in Narborough.
Right.
And so my, I think we need to find out if we're allowed to spend some of this grant money on the Windsor greening project, because, because it's, it's clearly doing that. But it was okay with, with Lower Merion Conservancy, when they met with us here, and the Villanova students, was to create a kind of an educational opportunity out of the terrace and the, and the stormwater management off the roof of the library. And they were gonna do sort of a design charrette with some students, and with Brower Hampton, and Borough, and residents of the Borough, to look at how to best do that. But that, that hasn't happened, and I think, and it was gonna be an add-on to the terrace.
That's the $15,000.
So I think, I would recommend that we uncouple the terrace project from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant.
If we're allowed to.
And just say, well, that's what we need to find out.
Right.
If they will allow us to. And I've heard sort of through the grapevine that it's likely that we can spend that money mitigating the impact of the Indian Creek, whether we build the terrace or not.
Right, right. And that's, that's what I was suggesting, is that we take a step back and see, do we really need to build a terrace? If we do need to build some kind of terrace, can we build it in a way that is less, creating less impervious surface, you know?
Well, let's, let's just separate the, the need for the terrace and the impact of the terrace from, like, let's just separate the whole discussion. I agree with you, I think we need to reassess the terrace, whether, regardless of the, regardless of the stormwater management situation.
Well, but I think first, Bob, we have to find out, the folks who gave us this grant may want to know, oh, you're not gonna build a terrace, what are you going to do instead? So I think we need to first find out, are they okay if we don't build a terrace? I mean, it's, all throughout this, it mentions that we've committed $150,000 to build that. So I think that's a first thing. I don't think we should just assume that they're gonna be okay with that, because this is kind of a legalish agreement between...
And they're aware of what's been going on all along the way, so yeah.
Yeah, but I don't think we should just assume, because we don't wanna find out, you know, a year from now, now you've got, still gotta spend the money for that.
But look, we have a delay. The price for the terrace came in significantly higher than any of us expected.
Mm-hmm.
Even higher than the estimates we had in 2012.
Right, yeah, I know.
And the reason, and the reason we went back into design, like, the revisions to the design, and the reason we did the test borings and all that, was to create a design that was going to be less expensive, and we came up with a design that was more expensive. So I think, I mean, you and I are in agreement that we need to reexamine the terrace, but let's, let's...
You're, I just feel like you might be jumping the gun and saying, let's disconnect them. I want to do that, I'm just saying, can we first make sure that that's okay? That the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation isn't gonna come and say, sorry, you don't get your grant money now because you're not building a terrace. I think we need to find that out. And I don't know how we find that out. I mean, is that them, or is it Lower Merion Conservancy that would, you know, who would, who would tell us that?
Find that out.
Yeah, so I think we need to find that out.
We'll find out.
And if the answer to that is, that's fine, as long as you spend that money in some way around Indian Creek, then great. We've got, you know, we've got a lot of leeway then to figure out what we do.
Right, let's talk about that.
Bob, like, right now?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
It's on the agenda.
Well, it is, but I don't know what the other possibilities are. I sort of look at this and say, I don't know. I mean, we can start talking about it, but to, I won't know whether any of the ideas you or I might have are even remotely feasible, because I don't know what the things are. I'd like to talk to somebody who understands the creek and find out what do, what would they like us to do, you know?
What's the price tag for the Windsor Avenue project? Where is it coming from?
I can tell you that right here, I can. $231,000 from Lower Merion Township to implement Phase 2 of the Shortridge Memorial Park Stream Bank Stabilization Project.
Is coming to Narborough?
No, that's to Lower Merion Town, Lower Merion Township is providing that money for Shortridge Park.
Actually, I'm asking...
No, but I'm reading through these, okay, that's Shortridge.
What I'm asking Sean is, what's the price tag for the project of the Windsor Avenue construction?
Shouldn't that be in there, a separate thing for Windsor Avenue?
We don't know yet what the price tag is, because they have to design it, and then cost it out. No, they'll, they'll cost estimate it for us prior to bidding, and that is gonna be done if we keep moving forward in the next six to eight weeks.
So Barbara, I'm just suggesting that we ask.
Oh, here it is. It's $179,000, that's what they've awarded us, right?
That's what they've awarded.
Right, exactly.
I'm just, I just, I think we can ask...
Oh, you're...
I'm suggesting that we ask National Fish and Wildlife, or Pew, or whoever's actually the grantor, if they're comfortable with us spending that money on the Windsor Avenue greening, because that's gonna have a direct impact on this clouded storm going into the Indian Creek, so it's...
That's what I said, we need to find out if it's okay, if we don't spend it on the terrace.
But do we spend it on that?
Well, yeah, it would have to.
On the Indian Creek.
I would think it would have to be spent.
On the Windsor Avenue.
Yeah, I can't imagine that they would agree to anything else.
Okay.
Sorry, I jumped to the wrong page in here, where I thought it was finding what we were, we were being awarded.
So assuming that's okay, which, I'm gonna assume it's okay, because they can't, otherwise, what are we gonna do, forfeit the money, because we're not gonna build a half million dollar terrace?
I know, I know, I'm not, I'm just, I'm not suggesting we do that.
So I'm like, tempted to have a practical conversation with you, not like, just being practical about this.
Well, I am too, and I, and I, at this point, I feel like, until, this is just my way of thinking about it, because we could spend a lot of time talking about something that we maybe don't even get to do, if they come back and say...
How soon can we find out?
Yeah.
Get on it.
You can call them right now?
I don't think they'd be there, exactly. It's 5:00.
Who gives us the answer, Maureen, or the Fish and, Maureen at Lower Merion Conservancy?
Maureen was my first contact, and she would probably be the one who would make that contact for us, or give me the person to talk to.
Yeah, because I'm betting it has to be the Fish and Wildlife people.
And I, you know, because I've been at a lot of those meetings, it's just an educated guess that that's gonna be okay.
Yeah.
Because they want us to spend, they want us to spend that money improving the creek, and...
And I expect members of the Lower Merion Conservancy to be here in an hour and a half.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
For the Public Works Committee, where we're talking about the Green Street project.
I couldn't state it better.
There are other reasons to reconsider the terrace beyond the funding implications.
Like, I mean, I...
Well, such as, it's the price tag.
Well, yeah.
And, and the fact that we're gonna do, we're gonna do a more global assessment of the facilities.
Right.
And in that context, we can then decide if we want, if this design is appropriate and what we need.
And that's what I said at the beginning, so that, that's, we're totally in agreement. I, I guess I'm, I'm looking at this and saying, is there any value in us spending time talking about what we might do with the money if, until we know for sure? And again, I'll come back to, I'm not educated enough to know what we should do.
My idea was that we spend it on Windsor Avenue, that's all I wanted to say.
Oh, I thought you wanted to talk about different ways we might do it, different types of payers, different types of blah, 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 and I'm just like, I can't, I don't know, I wanna leave that up to, you know, like, you know, whoever's helping us, you know, design what Lower Merion Conservancy is working on, you know, that, you know, I mean, I'm sure they're, they're using some form to help them with that, so. Super. So if you can find out, you know, if we can spend this money in a different way towards stormwater management.
Towards the Windsor Avenue project, we have it in the hopper, it's gonna happen.
Hopefully. Are you, are you thinking that when I say stormwater management, I mean something other than Windsor Avenue?
Well, I don't want us to go back to the drawing board, since we already have a project that's been in the works for eight years, let's follow through on it, and let's stay focused, it's okay.
Yeah, but if, if we don't need all of that to finish up the Windsor, we need, we'll need to come up with something else to spend it on, right?
Okay.
So I...
We can look at that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I have no idea. I guess we don't know until they bid it. So...
Are you, are you gonna move on, or can I say something? I know I shouldn't say anything, but I can't sit here and not say something, because you're going back and forth, you're going green space on Windsor Avenue. In the beginning, I was told that the grant was for stormwater, okay, that ran from Windsor, from Haverford Avenue, by the basketball, under the basketball, under the tennis, then there's a sewer thing alongside the west wing of the community building, out to the middle of Windsor. Villanova did work and put in a weather van, whatever, which I still can't find. Now, this is going back years, in the beginning, that all that had to be done. Now, you're saying the greening project on Windsor Avenue, are you talking about on the side of the, the west part of the community building? Are you talking a long way of Windsor Avenue?
So here's my understanding of what the Windsor Avenue project is, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's, there's ways, Windsor Avenue fills up with water when there's a big storm, right? Because, because a lot of water comes down, all the way down from like, the high point of North Narbuth Avenue, from Iona, it comes racing down Windsor Avenue in the wrong direct, you know?
Yeah, that I know.
And it flows down like, in a huge river, passes my house, passes everybody, and then it ends up flooding out the playground. So, so the, because the Indian Creek goes under the playground, there's a way of actually like, collecting that water and, and filtering it through like, biofilter, filtering it through shrubbery and greenery and stones.
Like the water trees.
And sand, like, all, and, and it means like, letting it in through the curb into these things that they're gonna build, that are gonna have trees and shrubs and stuff in them. And then it'll percolate down into, back into the soil, but much slower, and it's slow enough that it's gonna be clean by the ti, cleaner by the time it gets to the stream, and it won't be just running all over everything, all over the playground, overflowing the curb and going everywhere. So it lets it in, it lets it sort of go down and in, and creates a big catchment for it. Is that accurate, kind of?
Yeah.
Wait, but you don't, okay, you only have about two foot going down Windsor Avenue. Is that all they need to put this stuff in?
It's gonna be built in the space between the curb and like, somewhere where that, like, to where the chain link, like, somewhere in the area of the chain link fence of either, I don't know which side of the chain link fence.
Now, is there any projects around locally that has done this, that I can see?
All over the country, but I don't know...
Not country, I'm saying Lower Merion.
Colorado is kind of hard to work.
Times up, they're...
Are we gonna be the first to do it out here, or Lower Merion has a place, or Riverbend?
What's the park in Ardmore?
Linwood Park. Linwood Park has some nice ones.
I think I will go look.
Yeah, and they're done, they're like, all over the country now, the, it's like a way to, it's, instead of like, the water just going straight into a storm sewer, and then going through a big pipe and coming out in the stream, it filters through the ground and slows it down.
That I know, it's just like the, the trees, and bigger the roots get, the more water it sucks, excuse your expression, but that's what they taught me, how they say it. It takes it.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so when you're saying Windsor Avenue green, you're talking about the length of Windsor Avenue.
Windsor Avenue and stormwater.
Stormwater.
What do you call it, Sean?
We call the Windsor Avenue Green Street project, and it has two components that are active right now. That's the, that's one large component, which is, think of it as left field of the baseball diamond, it's all the way from where that outlet is that gets used for various events, about where the tall netting is, all the way out to the left field foul pole.
The gazebo.
Along Windsor Avenue, that long stretch is about 200 feet. And the second component of the project they're working on right now is a small rain garden that would, it's gonna take the runoff off of the roof of the Girl Scout room, and instead of it getting piped out to the stream, it'll get piped towards the street and go through a rain garden before it gets there. And that'll be a demonstration project, it'll, it'll look nice, and it'll have some interpretive signs, it'll show what's going on in the facility. And that's, that's a much smaller piece compared to the one I described earlier, which is the long piece from about center field to left field and the ball field, or along the edge where the fence is and those trees are.
And who takes care of this water and the gardens and greens?
Good question, that's one of my main concerns, is maybe, you don't wanna build something you can't take care of.
That's gonna look like a jungle.
It's been high on my priority to think that through.
All right.
It's a good point.
I think the Fish and Wildlife money was earmarked for the, the rain garden.
Yeah, a portion of it was...
The library rain garden and all that.
A portion of the rain garden, the rest is...
Yeah, which actually was, was independent of the terrace, so that rain garden is independent of the terrace, because it was gonna be...
And you still need it, regardless of whether there's a terrace there or not, because there's still a roof.
There's nothing in the structure, the technology of the terrace that had anything to do with the stormwater.
I know, which is why I said...
That's why I wanted them to be a cleaved apart, it's the rain garden and the runoff.
It doesn't fit the spirit of the grant, the design of the terrace doesn't fit the spirit of the grant.
But we can still build the other part without the terrace, yeah.
As long as they're willing to still give us the grant money, and that was just the question I had, because...
Thank you for answering me.
Can I just ask, pretty simply, is a rain garden, it's a green, a green space?
It's, it's very simply stated, it's a depression in the ground that's filled with plants that are acclimated to that sort of inundation of water.
Okay.
And so the facility can be huge, or it can be the size of a small little raised tomato garden.
Okay.
They both, they're all doing the same thing, water's entering there, it's, it's slowing down, it's stopping, some of it will be falling through, when it rains really hard, it overflows.
It's kind of like, it's actually not like something that we're doing in Narbuth, because it's nice, it's, it's actually a technology, and it's a technology that municipalities are doing everywhere, because, because it results in cleaner water in the rivers and in, for basic, you know, for our use. So it's like, not, it's, we're not doing it just because it's nice to have a rain garden, we're doing it because it is the technology, it's the state-of-the-art thing that's being done everywhere.
Sure, I'm just thinking about it in the context of the community use of that space, the playground, the children that run and play in that area, you know, if, it would be, if it would be something...
It has to be designed well, yeah.
If it would be something that, you said a rain garden, I was thinking, is that something that children can play in? Is that something that's dangerous? I don't, I don't know.
Uh, probably not. You wanna stick around for the public works meeting that starts at 6:30, because that's the first item of our agenda, and the consultants who've developed the concept plans will be here just to discuss what they've come up with so far, and those kinds of questions.
I'm gonna have to run home for bedtime and come back.
Okay.
They gonna have pictures?
Yeah.
Sometimes in, sometimes cities have, and it's more of a public works thing, although it's a property thing, because the, the rain garden that's associated with the library is a property issue, not a public works issue. I would say we draw, we give that one space in this committee, but it's, it's the issue of designing some water feature. Sometimes you can design a water feature that is a great play space, and that also collects the water, and I haven't seen them in cities, and I think it's definitely worth burning some thought calories up, you know, thinking about it, like, to see if there's a way to make those two things work together.
Right, yeah, I think what'll help is when we know, not only what the, the, you know, if, if it's okay that we spend this money on something other than the terrace, then it'll help to know what is the cost of the already planned Green Street stormwater management, I mean, with those two things are the same, and, and if, you know, if there's excess, we should look at that. And even if there's not excess, that's probably something we should look at, as something, which is maybe not right away. So I know, Sean, I asked if the grant materials could be put on the Borough website at some point, so folks could read these if they were interested.
The website, yeah.
Yeah, so, so if you guys could do that whenever you have a chance. And then I had, as I said, I had asked the office if they could put together a summary of what's been spent so far, and Sean points out, he thinks this is everything, but, you know, he's not gonna promise, because these different accounts were used in different places, but...
98% sure.
Yeah, exactly, you were very close on sure, but you said, mm-hmm. We spent so far about $27,000 on the design, $15,000 on engineering work, soil testing and some other things, electric work, and tree removal. And then I know you pointed out, Sean, that we have perhaps another $3,000 that we need to spend to get electric into the gazebo.
Yeah.
But if we're not going to do the design of the terrace the way it is right now, do we have to do the electric the way you're suggesting? Can they just turn back on whatever they turned off, or did they cut some, oh, they cut some, damn.
It was all, a lot, some of that money was site preparation, and so it actually, it's, you know, yeah, it's like, it's, it was architectural design, it was engineering, it was site preparation, so it's, you know...
Yeah, but for the terrace, so, yeah, yeah. Okay, so...
62, hell, the dog.
Yeah. No, the total is not 62, the total is, where am I here? Is 42. 27...
15.
27, 15, and 3. Yeah. Well, plus 3, 27 plus 15, that's not bad, that guy.
45.
So, um, so then we'll, we'll make that recommendation to council next Wednesday that, once, and, you know, maybe we'll know before then if you're able to hear back from folks on what, what our requirements are under the grant, you know? Do we, how, how close do we have to adhere to the words that are in there? But we can at least make the recommendation that, that things be put on hold for now.
Okay.
Cool. The next item was the Borough, Borough-owned properties except the 201 Sabine Avenue. We wanted to get an update from, from you, Sean, on the status of developing this inventory of issues and repairs.
Yeah.
Because I know you're starting to put that together, and Bob actually had said, you know, if you wanted help with that, and I said, well, don't look to me for help, because I haven't been around long enough, I don't know, so, but he might know some things that...
I don't, I don't have it compiled in any pretty way yet, but let me give a verbal update on what's going on. We have, we did a fire marshal inspection of, of this building. That was, that took, you know, a couple hours, but that was fine. And the results of that, we're, we're working on. That was mostly, we have to do some more cleaning up of items that are in hallways and so forth. The two things that are big on our list, I'll start with the biggest one, is roof repairs. The present roof system's at the end of its useful life...
Of this building?
Yes, of this building.
Any other buildings with roof repairs, just, just...
Yeah.
Okay.
And the library doesn't have a roof issue, it has an issue in its roof, obviously.
Okay, all right, all right.
But I did spend time with our, the Borough engineer, and we're discussing putting, we wanna put together a bid document.
For this building?
For this building.
Okay.
And our strategy is to do a, and I'll present this to you once I get everything together and back from the engineer, a full tear down and replacement of about 50% of the roof, and then a repair of the roof that is over top of the fire hall, with the option to go back and repair and replace that the following year. That's, we have about 8,000 square feet of roof area on the entire 100 Conway Avenue, not including the metal roof that's on our public workshop. So the, this, this way of phasing the project breaks it up in half. A total roof replacement, tearing down to the metal, re-insulating to a higher insulative value, putting a new coating, new flashing, total rebuild of the roof, which is what was done 20-odd years ago, for the whole flat roof system that's on all of these, could cost anywhere from $250,000 to $300,000. The Borough engineer presented some other options of repairing the existing liner and removing patches of the existing liner, and while those were, were less cost, I think when we really thought it through...
You're gonna be fixing that again before you know it, right?
We thought a partial replacement was probably the way to go, and that's what we'll recommend to council, although we'll have this discussion in a, in the context of all the options, we won't just narrow it down to the one that administration thinks is the way to go, but that's kind of where we're leaning. The other issue with, that I mentioned with the library, is that we have to get, we don't have a way to manage the condensate that comes from the AC unit, and that created a mold issue last year. I'm gonna go ahead and just talk with a HVAC contractor, I don't think we need the Borough I don't think we need the Borough engineer to come in and tell us we have a condensate problem.
Yeah.
We can just go straight to the HVAC people.
Oliver did a very good job of Sabine Avenue and they, I don't know if you've ever talked to them.
Yeah. And Oliver and Carrier have been our two contractors for this building. We still have some pending cooling system work that needs to be completed that we actually have been credited for from expenditures last year. So we'll get that work done this year without any expenditure. And that's some equipment replacement in the mechanical room for circulating chilled water. And hopefully the building will be cooler this summer. This one?
Yeah. Yeah, I know, the voting yesterday was pretty toasty.
It wasn't. So we, we have, there's a forensic engineer who volunteers to help the Borough if you want to make use of it. Maybe he's, his name's Brad Forme. And he did, he helped out actually with the design and specification of the Sabine Avenue property. And he, so he's, he's somebody you can call and talk to. He just, he's lived in the area forever, he likes the Borough and he's helped out before.
Okay.
Nice.
In terms of the condensate on the library. I think you were in the middle of the thought.
That's what I was just wondering, if you're thinking of your back.
The other thing, one of my neighbors brought up to me, actually at the Library event, he's a facilities manager for Penn. So he deals with capital projects kind of all the time. And he said, what they often do on projects that are much, much bigger than ours, you know, when they're building a parking garage or hospital addition or something, they'll bid it out, but then they'll also hire another engineering firm. Sometimes it ends up being somebody who submits a bid to, just as a, to give them an estimate, to give them like a independent, no big cost estimate. And he, he brought this up to me in the context of the terrace, which discussion I'm sure I already missed. Sorry about that, I had a work, work call. But for that or for anything on the bigger end, like if this roof turns out to be some much bigger number, he said it might be worth, he's got a few folks in his contact list that he could pass on to us to go to for estimating. Or there's the engineering firm that's in the office building across from the movie theater, maybe you know the.
Yeah, I know him. They do that kind of thing.
They do that kind of work also.
They do big commercial jobs, they did suburban station.
Exactly. Right, so they're a big, they're often involved in that kind of estimations work and as a, you know, as a firm, maybe they would do it for, you know, cheap, just to be of service to the Borough. It might be worth reaching out to them in particular if we ever have a need to have somebody do an independent estimate.
It's a good idea. I mean, in the institutional world, that's pretty much the practice, is that you get a, actually get an independent cost estimate before you put a project out to bid. And, you know, like a university or college, that's what they do as a kind of just matter of course.
It is, and sometimes you do that on big IT projects too. It really, you wouldn't do it for something, because there's a fixed cost to doing that. You know, it's really, you see it mostly in stuff that's, you know, million dollars, millions of dollars plus. But you know, for some of our projects, if we have sources who do it for very cheap and it's not a significant percent of the overall potential cost of a project, then it'd be worth looking at.
So that's a few items, but I think there's probably more. Is that the inventory that you're saying you're getting started on?
It's the inventory I have so far.
Okay, that's fine.
So I've been under the impression of now being on the Property Committee for a while that, that join a MAH at Penone, Yantis, well, let's not talk about Sabine.
We're keeping this.
The join a MAH, the architects who have worked on the library for years and years, including the addition, the newest addition, the back and terrace and the preservation engineers who worked on the pointing and the analysis of the, like the preservation stuff. The, some of the, if we were just to talk with them, and I'm willing to do this, and just create a spreadsheet of items that they've already identified and have in their notes that are of concern, such as the tie rod, the need for tie rod replacements at the library. And there may be a few, a few other things that didn't get attention during the pointing. I do think we replaced the, I do think we repaired the bad lintels. I think it's, I think the library envelope is pretty good at this point, but you know, there's a mechanical systems issue and there's the structure, but the roof, the gutters, the pointing, it's the windows, all of that stuff's in pretty good shape. But I'd be happy to talk with them and just create a, like just a spreadsheet, not to create a hierarchy or a, but just a spreadsheet of items. And just be a few, few calls, I think, if you need help with it. If not, I'm not looking for work, but I'm happy to do it if it helps you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, there is some more information buried in the documents that I've discovered.
Yeah, there's a lot in there, yeah.
The preservation work that was done two years ago, yeah, I just found that.
And there have been a lot of eyes on this building in recent years too. We just didn't necessarily gather all the data in one place.
That's true.
That'd be the key is just, we started this with a blank spreadsheet in the Property Committee folder. Gather all that data into one place so we can look at what's the estimated, you know, what are the punch, sort of large punch list items and what's the estimated cost and how much of that should get done this year? How much can we defer to next year and how much is like a want to have rather than a need to have? And then we can actually work with you to prioritize and make sure we've got financing for it.
Okay. And there's even just cosmetic issues, you know, we could, if, you know, we could just walk around and make a list.
True.
I mean, you know, just a list of things that would be nice to do and then decide if they're, how important they are.
Does it make sense, given that you have some history with the man of MAH and the architects for the library and that kind of thing, that you do have those conversations and just get them to spill their guts on?
I don't think it would take that long to just get it like a, just a baseline.
Yeah, it's just a list.
That's something the office can handle.
Okay. I just wasn't sure if maybe from, you know, is Bob going to say, well, but what about when he's talking with them?
Okay, that's, that's.
That's fine.
It's kind of me, but I'm happy to do it. And I think Yantis will probably do the same thing for Sabine Avenue, that's their, that's their role.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
Do you, do you, do you have a sense of where this falls kind of in your priority of things to, so when you might have a list like this put together? And I'm not saying, oh, a date, I was, you know, just a.
Everything happens on a monthly cycle with the committees and council and I have between, you know, of my own time, you know, three or four hours and of staff time, another four or eight hours. So there's maybe ten or twelve person hours that can be devoted to each committee in a monthly cycle. So that's kind of our time budget at this point.
So it kind of depends on what all we ask you to do.
What all we ask, what other committees are asking, asking the office to do and what.
Yeah, by we, I mean, we have the table.
Just on a side, kind of a corollary, would you ask us if there are tasks that we can do that we're happy to, I think I know all of us are having help. I'm happy to help if there's a task like that that's easy to do, you know, create a spreadsheet of items. So you could.
Yeah, it's one of those things where we have some volunteer time and I know I'll have some spare time here and there over the next month. If you've got the raw data and just, you know, want to ask us, feel free to ask us, like, do you have a couple hours to take the raw data and compile it into something and then let me take a look at it and you can help on that too.
Yeah. I mean, it'll help, I think it'll help everyone understand priorities a lot better because I, in my own mind, I'm developing a list. I'm developing an understanding of what needs to be done sooner rather than later. But until that's communicated to everybody, we won't come to a group understanding of how that all fits together. So I'm on board with that, it makes sense.
Fair to say though that the roof of this building is a, that's a high priority.
Yeah.
So that, it sounds to me like, that, well, that and getting the library, I would think we'd want that fixed before it's heavy air conditioning time.
Yeah.
So it sounds like those are the two things that, you know, if you look at, all right, we have only so many hours to focus on various projects. Those are the two things out of this inventory of issues.
And this building's cooling system as well, so it's the third.
Yeah, and that, is that something that takes up much time? Because it sounds like we've already paid for that, so we just, is it just getting them scheduled to come in and do it? I thought you said that we have, the cooling work is just, yeah, so it's not, like, you don't have to do a bid prepared?
No, we don't have to do a bid.
So it's not so, yeah, not as, not as time intensive. So it sounds like you already have priorities, you've got an inventory, yes, it's short, it doesn't, it's not complete, but you have priorities on it. So then it sounds like the rest of the items are just going to come eventually. We'll get a better sense of those.
That's something we don't understand, we don't understand some little more minor. We talked a lot about this room looking different the last time we got together. That's, that's an item.
Yeah.
It's an item somewhere on the list behind the roof.
Right, exactly, yeah, right, exactly.
And I guess you're not, are you waiting on us or on council for anything roof or library HVAC or this HVAC related? Do you need anything from us?
Well, for the roof, yes. That's going to be public bid.
Yeah.
There may be borrowing involved with that too.
We won't know that until you have a bid prepared, right? But the other two things you don't, I would think certainly this building's.
We have maintenance dollars for the library and I don't think it will exceed, it'll get into a public bid dollar amount. It shouldn't.
Okay. Okay. Anything else on the non-201 Sabine stuff?
So the office can spend up to $10,000, right, without, like on maintenance. I think that's how it works.
Okay, I always forget the dollar amount.
I think it's, that's something good to find out.
And where does one find that out, Bob? Oh, is it in the code?
It's in the Pennsylvania municipalities.
Oh, it's, oh, okay.
Someone pointed it to us.
Yeah, and I think it's ten. It might have gone up to twelve, but do you know, Sean?
I don't know if it's all set by that or if individual municipalities are going to have a different policy.
A different amount, yeah, and I think it is set by the state anyway.
Well, maybe they set a minimum or something.
I mean, so it covers like ninety percent of everything that probably gets done at the manager's, so it can make those decisions.
I'll see if I can find that out. And then it should be somewhere on the SharePoint site so we never have to ask, so we all can look it up.
Right.
It should be out there. Okay, should we move to 201 Sabine then?
Sure.
Okay. So we wanted to get a little update from you on how things were going with Yantis and what their assessment of the building is.
Good, I'm really pleased with them as a property manager. They're doing a really good job and they've been punctual to the point of me not trying, me slowing them down, not being able to just keep up with them. And we focused on health and safety assessment in the first two quarters of 2016. And our, the Borough's Building Inspector has inspected the property for health, safety issues and we have a punch list of things that need to be done. The more expensive items are sidewalk repairs around this, the property, the entire property, within and without the property. We're going to have to figure out how much of that we can bite off and chew. Some of the doors need to be replaced because we're not sure they're fire rated. And we're taking the approach to, we're really focused on the daycare operations, health, safety issues first. In fact, we've been working on those already this week. And it's a great number of punch list items, things like making sure the generator actually works and powers exit signs. Making sure exit pathways are marked correctly to get out of the building. Making sure that doors have, are hinged the correct way and have the right types of crash bars going in the right direction. So when you're in a dark smoky space, it's easier to get out. Points of egress, hazardous materials in mechanical rooms. Those kinds of things are all compiled in this health, safety assessment. There's about fifteen to twenty things that are taken care of and there's about three or four that are going to be higher ticket items. And the one I didn't mention was looking more carefully at the eaves of the roof and making sure that loose materials are not going to be coming down anytime soon.
I wonder the structural issue of the, of the deck over the, in the gym space, the second floor, the space that the elevator now serves. There were, there were already bid, I thought there were bid docs for it.
Yeah, we just got those back on the fifteenth or sixteenth of this month from the structural engineer. So we're ready to go forward and find somebody to do that project. And that'll be, that's an example of something the Borough would be the project manager on. Whereas Yantis was, when Yantis steps away from that, and I think there's a dollar amount in our property management agreement beyond which they won't do without our consent. It also has been a learning experience for the Borough to understand that there's a relationship for us to play in this property management role in that we don't need to, we don't have to, the idea that it was a turnkey operation, that we could just drop the keys off and someone was going to handle it and it would go away is not the way it's going to work. Borough is a property owner and property ownership, commercial property ownership, has a lot of responsibility. And we have to understand what our role as the executive director of the property is. What sorts of long-term capital improvements are we going to prioritize? What instructions do we give the property management team on a weekly or bi-weekly basis? So it's been a lot more time and thought and a word, Mr. Redbrite likes to use, mind share for the, for the office than I anticipated it would be, but we're working out that relationship. So that's been a learning curve for, for us as well.
I just want to say at this point that I, it's particularly concerned that we not spend money on like long, like big deferred maintenance things like roofs and new eaves and whatever. I mean, obviously we have to do sidewalks because they're, they're in the right of way. But big, big items until we know, have some sense of a future trajectory of like the property and how we'll, how we'll be using it. And, you know, as long as we keep visiting that, the timeline and the horizon of that and like, and keep harvesting all the different options so that council and the public can look at that and be aware of it. And I just think the sooner we can start to sort of think on that, just let it marinate, the better. And maybe it means even scheduling just some informational sessions where people who have ideas or about, you know, could think of different scenarios.
Of how to use that building differently.
How to use that building differently. We just like listen to them. And just not because we're going to act or initiate any of this, but just we start really thinking possibilities, you know.
So.
Because that could impact what we spend.
Right, so my, that, leading to my question to Sean, which is, is Yantis asking for something right now that you would say is this, well, you would do this if you were going to own the building for another thirty years in the form that it's in? Are they asking for projects like that or are they really asking for?
They haven't, they haven't, they're asking for obvious stuff because they understand the big picture. But you're getting at the relationship that we're learning, the office is learning, is that the property manager wants the building to be the most wonderful Class A office spacing at their hands on and spend every dollar to make the windows and everything as beautiful and great for the renters as they possibly can. As a property owner, you have to admit it, you have to weigh that against.
Is it going to pay off for us or not?
Your capital budget, dollars coming forth, are we going to, is it going to be the Borough's property down the road?
Or in what form, you know? If it's still the Borough property, is it still that?
Yeah, and I think that's, we have to, you know, I just, I picked up on that pretty quickly from all of their requests.
Well, it's good to know they're not asking for that stuff right now.
Because I think it's, I like, I mean, I like estimating even him because I like to push back a little bit on them and say, look, you know, part of what you. to push back a little bit on him and say, look, you know, part of what you, part of the service that you sold to us was that you would help us with this and, you know, and really, like, really shape, shape some of these decision points and give options. And so, I don't know what your experience you're having, but I hope you're also, you know, making sure that they're coming through on what.
Well, it's collaborative. If I misrepresented it as being them driving us into spending dollars, then I, then I regret that.
Okay.
It's been very.
But so, but it's working well for you anyways.
So far, yes, very well.
Okay, great. Well, that's.
I'm very pleased.
That's good. All right, so, is there anything that the office needs from us right now about 201 Seabine? Like, is, you know, is, you've got all these punch lists, is there anything there that you think you'd like council's thoughts on about whether it's?
That are like bricks and mortar type issues?
I guess, yeah. Because I don't know what else on the, yeah, I'm just, I mean, you mentioned the sidewalks, so I'm thinking, well, at some point you're going to come to us and say, it's going to cost this to fix the sidewalks and we'll have to decide how we.
Maybe we should talk about what, what dollar amount that should be before you want to know about it.
Who's the "we" in the first part of the sentence?
Council. Like, if we get a, if we get a $25,000 sidewalk bill, which wouldn't replace all the sidewalks up there because that's a big property.
Right.
You might want to know about that.
Right, that's what, that's what I meant. So, so are there things on this list that you're going to want to get council's thoughts on before stuff is done? And it sounds like yes.
The health, safety stuff, no.
But the.
Like, fire doors and, and obvious tripping hazards, no.
Okay. I, I couldn't tell when you said punch list, if the punch list was just the health and safety stuff or it also included things like sidewalk repair and.
That is a safety issue.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I'm getting confused now, I guess.
Yeah, we're trying, we're trying to draw a circle around these initial issues that we handle right away and we, the circle we drew was health, safety and we're trying to focus on the daycare part of the building as the higher part.
So, my question was, is, of that, is there anything that you need council's input on? And it's, sounds to me like you're kind of saying maybe the sidewalks, but then I'm hearing you say maybe not, so I'm, I'm just confused.
Probably not.
Okay.
Once we know how much things cost.
Oh.
It starts getting really high.
Yeah, because I think we, I'm trying to remember from the budget, last year, forecasting into this year, I think we thought there was going to be $75,000, $78,000, $275,000, $278,000 in net income if we didn't have to do deferred maintenance, catch up and raise our expenses on the building and we budgeted 200.
200 or 210, yeah.
210 net income, so we left ourselves some remaining budget for exactly these kind of expenses plus a little more for the property manager to ensure they serve us. But, you know, if you start eating up a big chunk of that, like 40, 40-plus, 50-plus thousand dollars and just like keep us in the loop, because then we start to get closer to a projected net income that looks like our budget number.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Did you, did you find the Pinoni engineering report on the energy, like the energy report that they did?
I did, yeah.
So, you have to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Talked a lot about thermal load and getting out the windows as a solution and that was big capital.
I mean, at some point it'll be important for some, whether it's the Borough as the future manager or whoever it's going to be.
Okay. Is there anything else you want us to know about 201 Seabine?
No, not the, not the money now.
Okay. Okay. So, okay, if we move on to the fourth item?
Sure.
Okay. So, oh, I'm sorry, I had one other thing that wasn't on here that I just wanted to ask since we had some emails about it and that was the tennis courts. And so, is there something, some action that we have to take on that? Because, Sean, you, you said you'd heard from Melissa and Jim and I, to say I don't know who they are, but the, with the Norbert Athletic Association.
Yeah.
They wanted to go ahead and do it and they pay for it with their funds, so is there something that we have to, to do, we as council?
Is that what you want to have done?
I don't know.
Well, I, I mean, that would be consistent with what we had decided as a property committee last year when we were discussing like whether to basically budget for tennis court repair or find some other way of repurposing the courts. And people came forward and said, actually, we really value the tennis courts so much that we think we can go out and get the funding to resurface the courts.
Oh, okay.
And make sure that they continue to exist in Norbert. And so, so that's like just, they're just coming through.
Okay.
On what we discussed.
I didn't understand that.
I didn't either, okay. Yeah, so does somebody need to say to them, go ahead, because you, Bob, you had indicated that, or you'd sent an email around from Ed Ridgeway saying that half a dozen people have asked him this week, is, are they going to be, when are they scheduled to be resurfaced? And like, I don't know how we respond to that. If, if we're not the ones paying for it, then shouldn't somebody just say check with the Norbert Athletic Association and?
Go ahead.
We can communicate with them.
Yeah, we can go ahead.
Okay. So, will you do that, Sean?
Yeah.
I mean, I'd be happy to do it, but I don't even have any contact information for these stuff.
No, let me go ahead and do that and.
And we, and we should definitely like find a way to thank them.
Yeah.
And recognize.
I'm, I'm sort of flabbergasted because I.
Because it's a great public-private partnership. It's a really, it's fantastic.
I know. I mean, I, I only remember some property committee meetings where it was talked about, are we going to do something or not? I didn't remember ever, well, maybe I wasn't at the one where you said, hey, they've agreed to pay for it.
And in many ways, it's like, it's very appropriate because, you know, there's.
Yeah.
Like a sort of smaller number of people in the Borough who like sort of are about having tennis courts and, and that they're really interested in being the stewardess and it's really great.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's different than the playground or the field, so that.
Yeah.
A lot of diverse users and.
Yeah. You get all different ages.
There's not a whole lot you can do with a tennis court to play tennis on.
Can kind of take ownership.
I do think they're going to build, I think they were going to build a pickleball court on one of the courts, which is also really great, which is like a game that.
Well, we know what it is because Bill said many times.
Bill talked about pickleball. And I mean, that was part of it, was like to find a way to get more people involved in using it.
And if that's what they're doing, great, and if they're not, that's fine, too.
Okay. I don't play.
I don't either, so I'm like, okay.
What's pickleball?
To me, it's a golf course.
It's just another way.
With a wooden stick hitting the ball?
Yeah, something, it's some other batting ball around in some way.
You can't play that while you're playing tennis.
You're playing with a pickle.
Well, it's a different kind of court, apparently, so you'd have.
They're actual pickles.
Yeah, pickles.
Duck, duck.
Pickle roll.
Yeah.
I don't know. It's a game.
That's a game.
For young and old.
Yeah.
I like.
Yeah.
Sounds Dr. Seuss.
It does, you know, I, and I'm like, if they want it, they'll build it, if they don't, that's fine.
Very bad and safe.
Okay. The public use policy for this building, the purpose of putting together this written policy, and this is something that was started before I joined the committee, so I'm just going to kind of repeat what I've been told is, and so, you know, if I, if I get you guys wrong, if I misstate anything, please tell me, is that, you know, we want to have a written policy that the office can follow when people want to use the spaces in here, this room, the, the two meeting rooms over there, the big room, we want to have some kind of policy for that that would, you know, make it really easy for them to say yes or no. They can go down and say, do you fit into the, are you asking for it on the days when these things are available for public use? Are you asking, you know, are you meeting all our requirements? And some of those would be having them sign a liability waiver or hold harmless agreements, something, you know, to, so, to make our insurance brokers happy so they're not worried about us. Maybe have a fee to cover cleaning if it's the kind of event that we think that, that's necessary, so. And we're starting with this building and then when we get this one figured out, we'll move on to the other Borough owned properties, so that's kind of how this came about. Do you have anything to add?
I just said this, it's a, it's a fairly common thing for boroughs to have.
That's true.
And as we looked around, we found a lot of examples of, here's the use policy with, you know, hours, what rooms are available, what hours are they available, what's the fee schedule, what's the application process, here's a little one-page application to get to the Borough manager so they could check, you know, does this person have liability waiver and have they, do we know who this group is and where do they slot in the priority, prioritization space used between, you know, these kind of meetings, well, office first, these kind of meetings second, commissions third, you know, other Borough solicited things next, nonprofits and other kind of publicly available groups next, and then like the general public last. Look, if you want to throw a birthday party, you can do that as long as the space isn't already being used by one of those other functions. It's, it's come up because we've had no written policy before, so for example, there was a women's club that wanted to use the big room over here and Bill wasn't sure like, were they allowed, I think it might have been like a women's Republican group, a women's Democratic group, he wasn't sure if like political groups were allowed or not, even though they sort of are. If, if that kind of thing is just like written down, then there's no dispute. Somebody called Sean a month or so ago to say they wanted to have a birthday party in here and like, it's like, I don't know, I don't really know how to respond to that because I don't have guidance on what it is. So, that, that kind of kicked it off and it was like, you know, we meant to do it last year, we got a little sidetracked with other Borough property things and we should just go ahead and get it done. And we've started drafting it based on cribbing from other boroughs policies. I beat the hell out of it today, actually.
Did you?
Because I, I looked at that, the State College, Pennsylvania one was actually really good in terms of the way it was organized.
Yeah, I liked that one a lot.
So, I took, I took what we had already, you maybe had already drafted.
Well, no, Bob drafted it. I made changes based on.
I never modified it after we made all those decisions at the last property committee meeting because I thought.
Well, Matt made.
I thought Matt said he would want to do it.
He did, he made, no, he, Matt made changes and then I went into it and fixed, there were some typos, I fixed those and then I added some comments where, you know, I was like, based on, because I was at that property committee meeting and I had some questions about, because I thought, wait, I wrote down something and that's not what ended up in there and did I write it down wrong?
I basically took a giant clutter.
And you just, and that's fine, that's fine.
I took all the content that you had and you organized it into something, so it's actually not that many.
Right, I know, that's what I was going to say, it's not going to be that.
And now that we've seen the State College.
Yeah.
Maybe we take the, the content from the one you put together that we've all particularly worked on and kind of restructure the whole thing using the State College as the board. I like that suggestion.
Or, or you did it, actually.
You did?
That's what I was, because I think that's what he did.
Oh, that's what you did.
That's what, that's what I said in my email.
That's fantastic, because that actually really was a Borough and it had, and they have a Borough manager and they have kind of like a chain command already.
And the application process looked pretty similar to what we wanted.
Application was great.
So, as far as the general guidelines of what you want of the policy to state, you have, you have a framework, please? Because we can take that framework.
Yeah, the sample application, it's, it's really, how did you find it? Just looking around.
A lot of Googling.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Different boroughs' policies and that one looked pretty, pretty close to what we.
The Google machine, that's very skillful.
What we, what we thought the, yeah, what we thought the process would be was that the three of us would get something that, that we all liked and then it would come to you and Matt and Leslie to look at to say, can we actually implement this? You know, is there anything in here that we're saying, why are you saying that? That's crazy, you know, or whatever. Or, there's a better way to do this or whatever. And then you would, then, so we would kind of work together then to get something that could go to council to say, hey, here's what we want to put together.
I also, I also restructured it a little bit because what we were doing was writing it as a policy for this building and so what I did was change it up so it just is a policy, it's a facility policy global.
Oh, nice, nice, nice.
And then it says, here are the facilities that are governed by this policy.
And the rooms within those.
Right now, it only refers to the specific rooms in this building and sets out policies, but I tried to restructure it in a way that if we, if we subsequently, you know, add in, for example, a community building where there are some specific use restrictions and priorities, there's a spot to drop those in and we don't have to like go re-amount the wheel.
So, it's more like, it becomes more like a database, so you can amend it with a database, like a list.
It's just easier to update. If you want to add, if you want to add the Chet Tyson Pavilion, you can do that.
Sure.
Slot in, you know, the things in a couple of places.
Like this kind of a chart.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
That's what I call a database.
Oh, that is not a database, Bob, I'm sorry.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a little group of data.
Yeah, it is, but, well, but let me, I'll, I'll say that a different way. That's not the way most people think of a database.
It's a unique identifier.
It does, that's true. He does. It's a single.
Database-esque.
Yeah, it is, David, you're right, yes.
So, what, what do you guys want to?
Well, does it make sense for, for, you know, Bob and I to look at it and we kind of provide comments again and?
I think so, and then.
And just let me know when you're happy.
Yeah, well, and that's, I was going to say, can we, can we be happy with it, you know, in a few days and give it to Sean and let him, let him and Matt and Leslie look at it and then maybe at the June caucus meeting, we can have it for council.
Right. And then I think, I know this is for hundred commodity policy, as we get further down, when we're ready to do the community building, then I think it's really important to invite in the Girl Scout, you know, the Girl Scouts and the, and the veterans, the Legion and have them come and decide with us how we're going to, like, collaborate.
The Women's League and.
Well, I think it's the Girls.
So, what is it like?
It's the Girl Scouts are under the, they're, they're there by invitation of the Girl Scouts in a way, but, but it's the, it's the Girl Scout room, so let's just get the girl, and it's the Legions, let's get them to work with us.
Yeah.
I have one question, does that mean that also that the contract and everything that the Legion uses and brought up will be changed too?
Just so that's consistent.
Or you'll look at it?
Look at it, make sure.
Because John, you know, doing this for years and all the other commanders.
Make sure.
John's isn't up to date.
We'll make sure John's here when we talk about it.
Yeah.
Because they're different octopus in each, in each one of these buildings. This one holds more than the east wing and the west wing.
Yep.
You know what I'm saying?
Exactly, and we're, by the way.
So, you're.
But the, the document where we flipped, where we flipped that, yeah.
Yeah, I know, but.
But yeah, let's, and if.
I just need to.
We, when we get, we're, we're not even there yet, we're doing this building first and when we get there, we'll want to take it, take a look at all that stuff, so if So if John's got whatever policy he's been using with other users, we should probably take a look at that too when the time comes.
It's a good one. I tell you, it's my husband, but it's a good one.
Yeah, so you can track, you can track him down.
It works, yeah, it's right.
Okay. All right, so, um, anything else about that? I don't think so.
Can we get a copy of, I don't know if John Walco wrote an opinion about the solicitors, just about the community building?
I don't, I don't know, I don't know that he wrote one.
If you got one, please send it to me because I know Bunny has asked me for it. And I have scoured every inbox.
I don't have one, I'm asking, I'm asking on behalf of all, just for the sake of everyone having access to the information or even the earlier solicitor. I think we have an interpretation from a solicitor in 1996 or '92.
It's on the SharePoint side.
It's on the SharePoint now, okay, good. And then, and then maybe we just need to know if John Walco concurs with it or if he has any concerns about it.
Oh, not to jump to...
You could ask him, pardon.
That's what I was gonna say, should I, should I check that with him and see?
Because it has to be congruent with whatever our, whatever we're doing is the use policy has to fit with it.
Right.
I do want to ask one before it slips in my mind. When you go read it, you're gonna see something weird in there and it's because the field house? I was thinking ahead to like which of these policies, which of these policies do we have to have like a little extra language in? And the field house, we're saying no commercial use in any of these.
Oh, and they sell stuff, don't they?
Except, I think that's the one where we would let people like do hot dog concessions or selling goodies, is that right?
Circus tickets, hot dogs, whatever else they sell.
Okay.
That would make sense.
Do we do that anywhere else or just there? Other than like fundraisers and like, let's call it fee for attendance events, like Oktoberfest?
Do the Girl Scouts, well, that's not, that's the Girl Scouts.
We're allowed, we are, we are now, but it's just for what the girls want to do. We don't use a room for outsiders to come in for a fundraiser.
No, I don't think any commercial stuff happens.
Other than concessions?
Otherwise you'd have people using the space to teach classes to do, you know, which isn't necessarily what the space is for.
Right, yeah, we could...
Anyway, so just keep an eye out for that. I just put it something like other than the field house, which can be used for concessions, you know, commercial activity.
Right, that makes sense.
Just wanted to check that was okay with you guys.
That makes sense. Okay, so do we want to talk real quick about future meeting dates and times? So I think it'd be really great if we could stack this with somebody else to have two committee meetings on one night.
Not to do building and zoning on this night.
Okay.
If that would work with the office. Like we could start at 6:30.
Well, I think the public works, like we have public works right after this tonight.
You guys have already grabbed that spot.
Maybe. Does this start recurring, public works meeting every month, right after this one?
But this is also, this is also late, late in the month. You and I had talked about this. You had said that you'd like us to avoid the last full week of the month because that's, if we can. And so we were thinking that maybe we could, well, or the week that we have our business meeting, so...
Wednesday after our business meeting.
Is that, does that end up being the third? Yeah, it does, in May. Yeah, sometimes it will, sometimes it won't.
That's a good idea, but so the Wednesday after business, do property and we could do building and zoning too, it'd be fine.
Because that gives us time to prep anything that comes out of this caucus meeting.
Right.
Yeah, because that's what we thought, it was like, okay. So what times would we do? I mean, I...
I love this time.
I know you do, but I wonder how useful that is for the public. That could, it may be a little...
Maybe an hour later.
Yeah, yeah.
An hour, any amount later, and I know this is like intentional.
I know, I know.
Has this day later. Is any, any amount later is better for me just because I work with a whole bunch of people in California? It's still the time of day when they call me around.
Well, they're like, you should be at your desk.
So six o'clock works, is that work for...
It's fine with me.
So when I lived in California, I woke up at 11 o'clock in the morning.
Because you're on the East Coast, aren't you?
Yeah.
No, that's because they...
No, that's the opposite. It's the opposite, yeah.
That's when people wake up early.
Any, any hour later lowers the probability that something happens like tonight or something. Where my boss is like, we have a conference call right when you have meetings handled.
So Sean, what does the office prefer?
The office prefers that it happen at a predictable date and time of every month.
Thank you, so do I.
Can't schedule my life around meetings that move.
Yeah, I'm right there with you.
We've moved, we're moving the business meeting though, right?
Correct.
To the third Monday. Okay, so third Wednesday.
Right, well, that's what, yeah.
Okay, I know, just to readjust to the fact that we moved the business meeting.
Yeah, I know, it's, yeah. So, so do we want to say property committee at six and building and zoning at seven? Is that...
Sure.
Does that make sense?
That's great.
This is the third Monday.
Does that work for you? Or would the reverse be better for you? Okay.
There is no building zoning this month.
Honestly, the reverse would be better for me if you can flip them.
Can we, can we flip them, Bob?
That's fine with me.
It's fine with me, I don't care.
That would be better.
You know, I'll make that request of the other building and zoning committees.
See if that works for them.
I can do it either way. If you can flip it, that would be awesome.
That's fine with me.
So, so our next meeting is going to be on May 18th and it will either be at six or seven. May 18th, sorry Bunny. This is gonna take me a long time to use to turning back and forth. I can't wait till we have different furniture.
6:00 PM?
Well, it's either gonna be six or seven. We're not sure yet, but Bob needs to talk to the other building and zoning committee members and if they can move to six o'clock, then we'll be at seven. The property committee will be at seven.
Okay, that'll be posted, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Once you get us out of that.
Yeah, but we definitely have the week set and the day. So, you know, we know when it's gonna be going forward, so that's really good.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so then I guess public comment, but we've had some throughout, so...
I have a question.
Sure.
So I'm curious about the way these committees function. So on all of the different committees, the people that are actually on the committee are all council members? Yes. And then during the committee meeting, it's essentially a conversation amongst you, but it's open to public comment at the end?
Yes.
Okay.
Or you can just...
Or you can... It seems that having more of a dialogue with the public during these committee meetings would be more effective.
That's why I'd like the room to be laid out differently because it would be much easier to do.
Right, and it seems like, you know, just thinking from the nonprofit, public administrative type of thing in a way to activate and engage your citizens, these committees might be a way to do that and maybe if you would allow citizens or residents to participate as a member of the committee just for food for thought for later or now.
I wonder if the code allows us to do that. We'd have to look at that.
Like sometimes in the past, like I've done building and zoning meetings where we all sit in a circle and everybody who wants to sits in the circle and we just go around and share ideas.
Very different from this.
It's just a different...
Yeah, the Girl Scout meeting.
And, yeah, like a Girl Scout meeting. I mean, and, and other committees are managed that way. And even buildings, or even like planning commissions sometimes works that way where people are speaking all around the room having the discussion, contributing.
Right.
But it's, and it's certain, like it's, but it's sort of at the discretion of the chair of the committee.
Right, right. I mean, it just, it seems like it could be a little bit more difficult to manage if you opened it up to residents to have a role on the committee. But I think it might be worth it being that you could have more volunteers, people actively engaged doing things to help. So that's, that's one comment. And then my other question you guys might be suspecting that I'm gonna ask is about the next phase of the policies for the buildings for public use. When you do get to the place where you're talking about the community building, you know, with all due respect to the groups that already did it or whatever it is, they have a contract that they're supposed to be using that space, I think that that conversation should be more open to the public versus just the two groups that are traditionally used to controlling those rooms. And if the public's not invited to participate in that conversation, I'd be questioning why. I know we've talked about in the past, there's in the deed of the building, it has something to say about use of the Girl Scouts, use of the Legion on the other side. If that restricts public use or even public participation in a conversation about that room, I'd like to understand what those documents are saying.
I don't think that's what you meant when you said we should invite the...
Oh, just to the next committee.
Right, well, is that, is that open to the public?
Oh, of course, all these meetings are.
And without question.
Okay, all right.
No meetings happen like unless they're just getting information, without public.
Right, okay.
Kimberly?
Kimberly.
Kimberly? First name, last name?
That's a first name.
Bunny, that's Kimberly Neff, Kimberly Neff Bunny Nardi. You're not strangers any longer.
Yeah, with all due respect to the Girl Scouts, I know you guys use the room and you do wonderful things.
Since 1927, so let me think, I know. You're hitting me with all this stuff.
No, I completely respect that and I want you to have full access to the room.
And we'd like to hear your opinions, so it's fine.
It's great.
I have good ears.
You guys do wonderful things. I'm very happy for everything you do. I just also want the public to have a say in that building as well.
Definitely.
Okay.
That's, that's fine. We listen well.
So I guess if it needs to be discussed at a later time, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
Yeah, we want to get the, the policy in place for this building first.
Sure.
And then build off of that.
Of course, okay.
And how much can be changed with the documents that we hold?
Yeah, exactly.
Right, exactly. I think we just want to understand exactly what they mean.
Mm-hmm, no problem.
And just because, you know, you guys have a priority usage of it, what that means for everybody else and how that affects the policies, et cetera, et cetera.
Yep.
Okay.
I always said we should have a meeting to explain that. Maybe we'll have that.
We had asked for a meeting like that a long time ago.
And we did, well, I did take you through. I took you through.
It sounds like that meeting is what's, what's happening, that we'll talk about.
But it's fair to say that we're kind of committed to making sure that there's clarity about what the role, what the relationship is.
Right.
Yeah, and since it's gone on since 1927, like you said, you would think that we would all understand it by now. You know, that it would be obvious. But it's, we're attempting to make it that way and it's just gonna take some while.
Funny, you said your husband, you have some documents at home?
I have documents, but also this council has, has documents and I have gone over the...
It might be helpful.
Right, so it just takes some, some review.
I'm actually thinking, because I think we're restructuring the, I'm just thinking aloud about like drafting things and we're structuring the policy, I hope, take a look when you guys see it, to be able to expand it, to include that building and reflect appropriately in the right places the priority to the Girl Scouts on one hand and the Legion in the other building.
Yeah.
And just in like big animal pictures, what it is is when the building was given by the YMCA to the borough, a requirement was that the Girl Scouts have first priority right of use of that one wing. And then subsequently, because the Legion had met in the other wing for a long time, I think in the 50s.
It was all for some Boy Scouts first.
Oh, the Boy Scouts first, okay.
And then they had just signed their tractor back in the 20s with the Methodist church. And whoever was the committee person for the Boy Scouts sent their thank you and stayed at the Methodist church. Then the, they sat down with the borough and they decided the veterans. And that's how it became the American Legion and given to them.
And that was council in the 50s, kind of there's some...
Well, it went from council to Narberth Civic Association. There was two different, it went back and forth. And they also had papers that if somebody wanted to go in other than the Girl Scouts, that they would have to sign and they charged. I, I don't know, it's that we do have other groups in there. It's not that, it's just so, we do let other uses of the room.
It's kind of like this, the council chambers? And the council has priority use of this room and the commissions and like the girl. But there are times where with special permission, there's no reason why somebody can't have a knitting circle in here.
Where I was actually going was the little, obviously to try to reflect in the actual policy document that, to give the office guidance on specifically that, but it might be nice to have, once we got everything figured out, summarize, to have that just historical context kind of documented somewhere so that five years from now, 10 years from now, if somebody new to the borough comes in and says, well, why is it like this? Then there's like actually a written summary of it somewhere.
Yeah, exactly.
That might be handy.
If you're a resident, you don't have any clue what's going on with the Girl Scouts. You're like...
And it feels to me like just as we write, we're gonna have to write the policy. I've gotta first cut it at just a paper application.
Has to be approved, has to be approved from council also.
Yeah.
Before we even...
No, exactly.
So I don't want to go there right now.
No, no, not for this building, but I'm just saying as we go through the drafting process, we're gonna wind up, we're gonna wind up with a, a policy document, we're gonna wind up with an application, we're gonna wind up with a draft like hold hungs agreement for anything. You know, throw a birthday party, you gotta identify the borough in case somebody slips and falls down the stairs.
That's correct.
And then maybe that, maybe in this part of this whole exercise, we can do that kind of like historical summary too. Just so that it's all kind of one part of the same...
And just another suggestion for the, with the policy and the usage, I think one thing that will also be incredibly helpful for residents and people thinking about using the facilities is like a real live time calendar of what's happening. I mean, as close as possible. You know, you can use a Google Calendar, Sean, I'm sure you know other options potentially.
Just we're pretty busy.
Exactly. So something that it shows on like the borough website right now, that there are property committee meetings or something. If you have an RSS feed or whatever it is that's doing that. I'm sure there's a lot of different types of technologies that I don't know about. Just a way that residents, just to open up the information, I think will make everybody more comfortable. Thank you.
I have other questions or the other, other things. Are we still taking comments?
Sure.
I got three, I got three minutes. Wait, I got, we have four minutes. 201 Sabine Avenue. You were saying the windows were replaced around the Montgomery County, the daycare, the windows have not been replaced?
No.
The upper part that we talked years ago about? Have the steps been done?
No.
Oh. All right. So that has not been done. I thought they were done. The other was, when you talk about the library's roof, is it just the middle section of the roof?
Yeah, the, the area over top where the administration of the library works.
Oh, it has a side door that goes out towards the east wing.
Drop ceiling, you can get water in there.
Yeah, well, we do too, but ours hasn't, I, we don't, I don't see mold growing yet. And we still have that crack, but we were gonna discuss that later. I didn't know if you forgot about having someone look at that again, that it's moving and the windows are moving and the sinks moving. Because then if it collapsed, we won't have to worry about having meetings and different things. One mess building to worry about. I think that song won this, right? That's all I have, I thank you.
Thank you, Bunny. So we're ending in a minute and a half, is that right?
I'll go over to you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it just depends on, I mean, I know you have guests coming today. Right, but are you starting at 6:30, is that what you're... I'm so sorry, okay. We scheduled for 6:30, yeah. Okay, so I have a number of questions, so I think I'll submit some of them to Ask Norberth, and I'll look for answers there, but related to what Kim's asking about, when is it that we're gonna take down the barricade? I still don't understand why it is that we can't just remove it and make it at least feel more like everyone who attends is part of what's going on, as opposed to you talk to each other and we sit here and wait till the end of the meeting, when there's no time left to make public comments or ask questions.
There was a lot of public comments tonight, though.
No, I'm asking when the barricade can come down, yeah.
I don't want to, we looked at that.
No, I know there was a lot, and I waited my turn, I really, and I'd like to understand, I hear you saying now that committee meetings are ones where you can just jump in and ask questions, I didn't know that, so I, I wait till the end.
It's not a policy, that's, I think what, is the discretion of the chair, and I'm happy to have that happen, as long as we don't get too far off, and that's part of the reason why we ran long, is that we have some discussion, and that's fine.
Right, okay, so I waited until the end, because I thought that's what we needed to do, so now my question that I've raised before is, when can this barricade be removed to create more of an atmosphere of we all participate, as opposed to we watch?
Right, and I, we've already asked the office at their convenience to have this removed, to get this furniture out of here and replace it with just the, some tables out of the big room that we can set maybe in a V or something, so that we're looking out, but that's really at their convenience, I'm not gonna force them when they've got a lot of other high priority things to do.
If we can find volunteers to remove the barricade, can we do that?
Come on, I'll, I'll...
A crescent wrench and...
Everybody push.